Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. The time is five thirty P M. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session on the first floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, I'll come back out and announce work session, at which time the public is invited and encouraged to attend. Thank you very much.
But a language. Um, I'm gonna go through a few slides here instead of the discussion. I'm gonna turn it over to the law. May I have some questions? So this slide is. The size of the difference more or less possible than the west side's. And what would be the. Uh, the result of nine hundred and fifty three. So we find that as a hundred and forty. You're not part of those types of passing any one of the. That's going to turn into a unit. I even said in the executive session. Is there one or two other kind of. You know, so you may try to. And there's party. You're partying more than people. So it's just a free right now. So it's been by starting and buying that soon. There is kind of reason for this. People have been talking about this. So it's beautiful and making how we talk. Now, while we can talk to them, I suppose. For women. There is not a cost. It's quite possible. So then. Also, also research to work on. And discover that we need to have a two plus. What they're in the title. And when I say she comes, it happens by a fact. I think it's concerned with the young women. And it's kind of only this two month. For them. Now that means that. Which one? So by now. It will not be only this time. But especially since in the past. Without the resigning in time. And just for the change of concern from probably one. Switching to our home. All of these. Do you know that goes down by the same. Because the justice act. The government comes to the government. And we can't. So saying that, we're placing a reason. If the government. So the government. And we can certify. Here's the. Because you might tell us. Or I think it's a first thing. It was. Because the property is not. Can you say the concept? That the only thing that's about that topic is. The cost of the. Whether that's made up. Those are supposed to be. Okay. How far I can do that to the. Because there's not many. Many times. Those two could be changed. If the reason and the reason. Of. Those issues. The additions. Structures and units of the. How many. Type of. I think it depends on how many. Type of buildings. They're considered. And that's. Both. They're not all three structures in any way. They're covered sometime. They're kind of allowing different. Certain parts. That wish in all places. By the house. It's pretty certain. Accessory structures. And with sheds. And roofs. And we've learned in such a way. That's what we need. Who's in the boardroom? And committed to that property. John. However. Unfortunately, many are totally allowed to take this act of. To the. All in purpose to serve. The life of the man. Jackson found out that the legal. And the American. So what do you mean? Well, well, well. Will be. And legal education. And. And paying the. Stress. Probably not. And the man. About scoring. Have two. This is. Fifty twenty minutes. And just saying eleven years ago. Five is only ten. After we. I just want to get out of. And of course, you know, fun. With. So it's. So it's. T-shirt area will be possibly the rest. So the land. At the conference. They're. Putting. On. That's. Having. A lot. Sure. To be. Out. Now, that's. Sure. That I'm sure that there is. I do run. That. I'm. I mean. I think. So it's. Hard to. Um. Um. Yes. So. And that's where they have to do. The. I'm just thinking. Uh. You. Where. Do. I'm.
So. Are you referencing the accessory structure? Are those elements that you. Passed? Or you discovered that was. I didn't. Well. You have. In. The. So are you telling me that in that. That. You know. And. And you. There's not. Classic. By these. Exactly. These. Lots. So is the decision. Basically to. Go inside it. And zone it. In a way that allow. Like. As a brand. All current accessory. Of course. But the zone is. Or the forces on it. Under the terms of. When you. Then. They go. And. So. Yeah, sure it is. So that that seems to be kind of. First of all. This is. Coming. So. I don't know. He's thirty five. I know the country. Like. You. Um. Sort. And. It's. The. The. About. I think. Nineties. Or. Yeah. I would. I would. I mean. I would. 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 I mean. I would. I would. I would. I would. I would. I would. Um. So that's. Not. You. Like. Right. And yes, it's. So. Totally. Right. Everything. That. Is. I mean. You. Mission. Now. For. Speaking. Would somebody. That's. What's kind of challenging. Now. Great question. So when you set up. You know. And supporting. The accessory structure. You have. The. So. Generally, it seems to be. There is zones of. Such. That. So you have to train. To. To. And. Very. And. That's. Change. And. I have. To. So without. I mean. How valuable. That's something. But. Just. I don't know why they take. Is it only giving for five days. So. It could. Hmm. So that. Without the. So we had a citizen. Laughing about this. Some. He. Retires. Or. He thought it was just dangerous. Being. Um. He loved. He was. Um. Part of the. And he. Human. Talked to people. Probably. They. They. They were. One band. Each. So. So. That's why there wasn't any. I think. I don't know. I'm. I'm. Second. See. But. But. I don't know. The. Well. We. 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 Back. And this is why I still. Remains of. Circuits. Not. Of. Another. We. We have. Facility. A current. Facility. But. Not. Yet. You know. I believe we have. A. Well. We have. We have. We have. We have. We have. Actually. But. I got. I need to ask a question first. I need. Connect the dots. So getting rid of the fucking. Rich. Is. People. Thought you. That you were. But. Down. It was. Serious. About. But it's the connection. About. I'm using additional. accessory structures. And. That was. One of the. We're going to go. Through. I. I don't. Because. I don't. Kind of. Really. Because. The. And. And. Parking. Five. We. We have. Over. You. You know. In the quiet. Street. It was. Parking. On. The. Street. So now I can't get. Parking. So. I'm. 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 Parking. And. The. And. Parking. Thank you. That was. I'm not. It's true. So. I'm waiting for. I'm not going to. Read. Or. I don't. Think. Um. We have some things. But. It is. Don't be. Like. So. They. So. This one person. Coming. So. I mean. I mean. So. How does it work? They. Structure. The. Someone. The. I'm. Sure. Under. Occupied. Um. A. Out. The. And. Very. But. And. If you go. Uh. The. We have. Discussion. About. This. My. So. The. 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 Especially. The. Of. The. And it started. Last. It's not hard. It was. The. The. Coming. Normally. Other. Things. The. That. Not really. The. The. Structure. And. That. You know. And. But. And. To. Really. But. We. I think. It's. Sometimes. The. Collectors. High. And. You know. Where. We. Serve the function. Of. And help us. To. Their. The. The. But essentially. The. The.
Recording stopped.
Get out. Get out. They. 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 I think. Pretty much. Was. Leaving. So. They. They. For example. From all the. And structures. That. And. 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 Like. This. Well. And. Basically. You do not add. To the. It's. So. So. She started. You know. And. And. You have to. You have to. Be certified. Do I get it? I think. I have to. Be. Uh. Which now means. I can. No. So. If all the accessory. And. Not. They. Or. Walk. But. But. But now we're. We're still. Which. We got. The. But. I think. But. One way to. And. Next. But. And then. So. We. 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 So. So. I'm. I'm. Yeah. So. You're. Where are you spending the first step? Is that. No. We. We. It's. I don't know. The. And. What's. The history. Why. It's still. Why. You. You know. Uh. We are. And. We. And. And. We. I don't know. Uh. Well. I'm. First. Something. You. And. You. Yeah. I was trying to. Like. You. Something. Like. Action. You can. I think. You. The. That's. The. I think. Those. Were. The. West. The. Type. Is. And. It's. Too long. And. The. Type. Is. Not. About. The. And. And. Track. But. We. Have. The. I mean. I mean. I mean. Your. And. So. You. You. Five. I mean. Well. You. And. It's. Coming. One. Two. Because. And. 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 I guess. You. What's. You. Have. Lost. Fifty. Stop. Like. You. Stop. When you start changing. You don't. Well. Well. We. 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 We're. We're. So. You can get your. And. Start. So. You. And. You. You. Sure. Like. This. Okay. Because. You. So. I think if we tell.
... an offer to purchase it, um, for about, uh, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, the, the small church was really the best outright, uh, property, uh, in Seattle, uh, and in kind of ways, um, they've been doing it for around ten or twenty years. Um, we would like to, you're supposed to kind of want to, um, and so, once, uh, they sent us this effective, more efficient, um, they sent us a, a proposal that they had done on the property, well, the property was in market at the church there, uh, the value of, of the man is about a million dollars, um, and it wasn't really an offer, well, it wasn't an offer actually, it was a replacement, and so when they asked them, what is the student's capital disposal, they came back with an, an offering, um, to sell the property to the city for a million dollars, um, in addition, or lease the property to the city for another thousand dollars a year, um, for three percent per year, that's what they wanted to do here. So basically back there, it took years, probably same, uh, hyper leasing for about a hundred thousand bucks per year, uh, over the past two years. Um, so given those two offers, uh, we, we responded and said, um, the city will pursue the park apart, and then, um, people are requesting, and, um, the, the, and the board, uh, they reached out, asked me, um, and so, uh, we didn't make a call back to their platform, uh, because sixteen, and their new requests were to get away from the church, um, they felt like, uh, they didn't, they, we didn't, we didn't set up a very realistic, uh, situation. You see, there's a mess up if you want to monetize, we saw, uh, the community share that, 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 the, 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 the , um, so they asked us to come back with a, a, an offer. Uh, I will say, the cost to replace this parking, uh, the, the, just the capital cost is about a million and a half to two million dollars. So there's a, um, there's a real cost there, so just on top of losing, we, we give whatever space to, to build that parking. So very likely to live back the down park, uh, with the, with the, with the, with the , uh, the, 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 uh, the, 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 uh, so it would be distributed, not available, um, so we would like to, um, create a, 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 an offer to the agencies, um, and what we would suggest was, if all of this is, on profit, property, they would consider with the, um, if they were to ask, if they were to sell the property outright, well, we would register as a, as a, we want access to the parking, um, and so as a, as a, as a, as a, to, you know, offer to buy it for a seven thousand dollars outright, um, we would, um, the, the suggestion is to start there, with, you know, an offer to the, uh, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, order the use of, of the property, permanent use, um, all other terms was, you know, the city covering my ability, the city internal the parking lot, um, it gives, uh, the, uh, how, 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 the parking, how we use it, and, 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 you know, we, we, for future use of that, um, going, going on history, I'm sure some people down there, they definitely, you, you do need that parking, um, the city does need that parking, um, and then, we, you know, with some possibilities, uh, to have the, 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 uh, for, for, um, if they were to afford that, they would have to back to do, um, to, 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 to,[314.14]
Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
May, do you mind signing this for me? Thank you.
Done.
Oh, so it's anything that's in your pockets. Actually, I would like to keep you all with bring it out inside for you.
Good evening, everybody. The time is 7:35 PM. We will be hosting our work session after the conclusion of the regular session of the Cop, uh, the city council. So we had to defer that due to the length of our executive session, so we apologize for that. We are opening the, the regular session of the Capel City Council. And as a reminder, any persons that wish and wish to speak during the citizens' appearance must sign the register outside the council chambers and list your address. This evening for our invocation, we have Jordan Matheny here to give the invocation, and then we're going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. Jordan?
Our dear Father in heaven, we come before thee as members of the community in the city of Capel to give gratitude for the blessings with which thou hast seen fit to give us. Father in heaven, we recognize thy hand in our lives and the bounteous blessings that thou hast given us. Father in heaven, at this time, as many people within our community are recovering from the storms we've had over the past few days, we pray that their hearts will be comforted and their spirits will be uplifted. Father in heaven, we pray for all of the members of our community who are reaching out and helping the other members of our community, that they will be blessed and that their families will have the things with which they stand. Father in heaven, we ask for a special blessing and an added measure of thy spirit to be with us. We ask that blessings will be given to each member of our city council and all those who volunteer and give their time and means and effort to make this city what it is. Father in heaven, we pray that the means that they are blessed with to help and uplift the community will be used wisely and that we will be able to uplift our community for our children. Please bless our children, that they will be protected from evil and from the fiery darts of the adversary. And we pray for these things, Father in heaven, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Item number six is swearing in of council member for place two, and I believe we have our Judge White here to swear in council member Brianna Hinojosa Smith.
Good evening, mayor, honorable members of the council, city manager. Thanks for having me again. All right, if you'll please raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Brianna Hinojosa Smith.
I, Brianna Hinojosa Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
To faithfully execute the duties.
Faithfully execute the duties.
Of city council, place two.
Of city council, place two.
Of the city of Capel.
City of Capel.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Reserve, protect.
Reserve, protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Capel.
City of Capel.
So how we got. Congratulations.
Well, I'll take a minute to say thank you to my family first and foremost, because they continue to support me time after time. Oh, thank you. I just want to say thank you to my family for their support time after time. This is my seventh term on city council. And just wanted to say thank you to them and thank you to the council and to the staff and first and foremost also to the city, to the citizens for continuing to entrust in me. And so, and Officer Mitchell was giving me a hard time over the weekend. He said, "You planned it this way because we're going to be there anyway." So I guess I'm excited to see our, our police officers here and our chief of police. But honestly, in all sincerity, thank you for the opportunity and for giving me another three years to serve the great community of Capel.
Item number seven is a proclamation recognizing the Citizens Police Academy for 25 years of service. Anybody that would like to come forward is welcome to come join Dan and myself.
Absolutely marvelous.
I want to be behind this thing. Okay, yeah, just behind this.
I hope, is your group more organized when we get doing, when we get going? Okay, never? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, whereas the Capel Citizens Police Academy, Capel Alumni Association, the CPAC, is celebrating 25 years of volunteering in the city of Capel, and whereas the Citizens Police Academy is designed to build a bond of mutual trust and respect between the Capel Police Department and the community, and whereas the academy highlights the importance of citizen participation in public safety so that the community may remain free from the fear of crime, and whereas the Citizens Police Academy, Capel Alumni Association provides academy graduates with a means to continue their connection with the Capel Police Department, and whereas CPAC's volunteer members meet regularly and provide their time and efforts to improve relations between the Capel Police Department and our community and to further the aims of the Capel Police Department, and whereas, and I'm adding this, our, our chief of police says, "Communities keep communities safe," which is very, very true. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, mayor of the city of Capel, do hereby proclaim that the city of Capel recognizes the Citizens Police Academy, Capel Alumni Association, for its 25 years of volunteer service within the city of Capel. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Capel to be affixed as 28th day of May, 2024. Congratulations. Now, I believe you had asked for a little bit of time to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 1999, the Capel Police Department held their first Citizens Police Academy, bringing in citizens to learn about the department. The first graduating class of that class established our organization so that people who graduated from the class could continue that connection. Back in the 2000s, we helped teen court and tag a kid, and we've continued our efforts up until about an hour ago when we wrapped up our fingerprinting session over in the lobby of the police department. So our organization really embodies Chief Barton's motto, "Communities keep communities safe." We are the community stepping up. I want to thank all the members of the command staff and other sergeants and officers who are here tonight to witness this. It's very meaningful for all of us to have you here. We, all of us in this organization and all of us who have been through the years, not just the people here, but current and past members of council as well, do this because we love our community, we support the department, and we are honored and proud to have a means to continue our connection with the department and to be of service to our community. Thank you very much for this proclamation.
Councilmember Brianna Hinojosa Smith had something to say.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to say first and foremost, thank you very much for everything that y'all do, the amount of time and commitment that you put into this group. I've loved to see it grow over the years. I think I was part of either class number three or number four of CPAC when I first moved to Capel. It was one of the first programs that I participated in, but it's just been really exciting to see everything that y'all have done and how much you pour your heart into what you do, and it just makes Capel even that much more of a special place to live. So thank you all so much for your time, your commitment, your dedication, and your passion.
Councilmember Carol?
Thank you, mayor. Sort of piggybacking on what Brianna's talking about, it's so crucial that those of you who are in this community want to, I say patrol the community, sometimes you hear, Citizens Patrol sort of gets a bad rap because it's usually some kind of punitive or it's people wanting to enforce their will on the, on, on the population, and that is not what we have here. This, this organization and the, and the partnership that you have with the police department is, is fabulous. I mean, it's, it's citizens of this community that want to take care of this community, right? And that, and protect it and can see it continue to be safe and to watch out for each other. So I, I think it's a great attribution of loving your neighbor, right? You're, you know, we're supposed to love your neighbor, and this is a perfect way that we do this in this community. So thank you very much for going through the police academy and continuing to serve and getting your hours every, what, every week, every month, whatever it is, out there on patrol. I think it's great having y'all out there. And thank you to Danny, or Chief Barton and the, the police department on the partnership that you have with this organization. Thank you very much for that.
Mayor Protam Nevels?
Uh, thank you, mayor. I just want to thank you. You guys have committed so much time, effort, and energy to not only supporting our awesome police department, but supporting our community as a whole, and that really, really means a lot to, I, I know everyone sitting up here, but I mean, I think even the people at home that don't even realize yet what this organization, I say yet, you know, what the organization is and what it does, but I mean, you know, Citizens Police Academy, Citizens on Patrol, and the fact that you guys are the glue that holds everything together and keeps people connected, that's what this community is all about, staying connected, being together, supporting the, you know, the amazing officers that we have here. It is so vital to what makes Capel, Capel. So I want to thank you guys for all of you, all you do. If you're not familiar with Citizens Police Academy or the Alumni Association or anything, please, I ask all citizens, check that out. They've got some awesome shirts that are there, so, and I love them. I think a famous man had that quote on the, on the front. Who is it? Oh. Oh, that guy right over there. So please, you know, check that out, support this program. I, I think it's, you know, incredible program. And again, thank you for all you do. We really do appreciate it.
Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Gotcha.
Okay, sorry, I'm not in there. But I wanted to thank you, the CPAC members, and also the Citizens on Patrol members. They are the heartbeat of the citizens in Capel. I've been proud to be member of the CPAC for the last nine, 10 years. They do a wonderful job to the citizens and the city of Capel. They do vacation check. When we are out, they come around and just check on your house. That's one of the services they provide, as many of the things they do. I want to also thank the staff, Chief Barton and his command staff. It's, it's been a great privilege working with them, and thank you for all you do. Thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Prem Kumar?
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Citizens Patrol, you guys are amazing. Thank you for your service. I've always wanted to be part of your team. I've mentioned this to a couple of you. A long time ago, I thought I'd get to carry a gun if I joined your team. But turns out, they don't let you do that. But, but thank you for your service, and, and I think it speaks volumes about what you do, because the entire command staff, starting with the chief baroness here, so I think that tells everything of the service that you guys do. Thank you.
All right, before we get on to item number eight, I did, I need to apologize to councilmember Matthew. He is remote by Zoom and is participating in the meeting tonight, so sorry about that. I forgot to mention that you were on the screen. Item number eight is present, or is, item number eight will be deferred till a later meeting, and we're going to move on to item number nine, a presentation regarding the residential rehabilitation grant program by Mindy Hurley. Ms. Hurley?
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here. Now that the test round of the residential rehabilitation grant program application period has concluded, we wanted to give you a quick update on the program. We know that this has generated a lot of conversation in the community, so we wanted to provide you all with some information about, about the program. So I'm going to first run through very quickly what was presented to you all in February before the grant application went live. The pro, the program was designed straight from what the community identified as a goal in the Vision 2040 Plan. Specifically, the goal can be found in the future-oriented approach to residential development pillar under goal number two, explore refit and refurbishment of older housing stock. This goal addresses the housing stock in Capel with no reference to age or income of the occupant that resides in the residential structure. Again, this was identified as a goal by the community and listed as a priority for, by council in your 2023-24 work plan. The grant program was designed to enhance the exterior curb appeal of the homes. This quote that you find on this screen was a direct statement from the Ford Task Force on the purpose of the program. This was all designed to protect the integrity of Capel neighborhoods so that everyone in the neighborhood would benefit from improvements that were made to a property in the neighborhood. This map was compiled by Matt Steer and showed you all that approximately 45% of the single-family homes in Capel are 30 years or older. So staff knew that there was a tremendous amount of homes that could qualify, but we had no idea what kind of response we would receive from the community to the program because the program did require, it still required an investment from the resident in order to perform any work. The task force identified the criteria listed up on the screen to qualify for the program. So if you can see, there's a line through the rental property because city council made that distinction at the workforce that we discussed this, that they wanted this program only to be eligible for owner-occupied homes. So again, the rental properties were removed from the eligibility. This next screen, or this next slide was the list that was identified by the Ford Task Force as eligible projects. These were the projects that would have an impact on the curb appeal of homes. The program was promoted as a maximum grant of $10,000 per property, but that would be given as a reimbursement, so it was a 50% reimbursement of actual cost once the projects are completed. Grant recipients at the end will submit their receipts in order to receive their reimbursement. And the last bullet point was removed once it was identified that only, only owner-occupied homes would be eligible. As we stated upfront in, in the work session, that the budget was $100,000 and it would be funded from ARPA funds for the test program. So after city council gave the green light for us to move forward with this program at the February council meeting, an article was written in the paper, and staff started receiving numerous calls of interest. We heard from individuals that said they would not be able to apply in person due to their work schedule, and we also heard from others that said they would not be able to apply online because they did not have a computer or they were, didn't feel comfortable navigating a computer. So that's why the decision was made to offer both online and in-person options. That was advertised in advance of the application going live. Postcards were mailed to every home in Capel, and after they were mailed, residents were provided a minimum of one month in order to obtain quotes, obtain quotes, research their project needs, and do all the research that they needed to before the grant application actually opened and went live. The program was advertised as a first-come, first-served process. The ways to apply were advertised in advance of the application going live, and the website had all of the information applicants would need in order to complete, in order to complete the application when they did apply. So staff tried to be as transparent as possible throughout the entire process. The grant opened at 8:00 AM for everyone the morning of May 1st. The grant opening went exactly as was advertised. So on May 1st, 50 individuals showed up to apply in person, and 646 applicants applied online. Those that showed up in person were offered a computer and were told that we would take their paper quotes if they had them. They were also told that they would have to complete the application by hand, and we would input their name to get their application in the official queue. Only one person took a computer from staff as we went out and offered those. Some others that were in line also told us that they had individuals from their family applying online at the same time, so they didn't need a computer. Prior to going live, the system was tested to check capacity, to make sure that, that it could handle the number of applicants, and it never went down throughout the entire process. Automatic confirmation emails were sent to those that successfully submitted an application. So while the confirmation emails were delayed going out the day of the email, they did not impact the submittal time in any way. So just to reiterate, the application timestamp in the queue is the time the application was received and not the time that they received the confirmation email. So now I'm going to go through and provide you with some quick statistics on the program. I want to thank Katie Crawford, who's in the audience, for compiling all of this data for us because there was a lot of information to go through. So 13 grants were awarded. The first 13 applications received, that we received in the queue, all met the criteria and qualified for a grant. So the first application was received at 8:01 and 39 seconds in the queue. The 13th application, which was the final application that received grant funding, was received at 8:02 and 10 seconds. And so you'll see up on, on the screen, you can see the number that came in under each five-minute increment. We just wanted to show you through five-minute increments. I will tell you that Dan Kohler reported that we had received 70 applications in the first minute. That was my fault. I was, as I was reporting to the Ford Task Force and telling them about how quickly the applications came in, I made a reference to that many coming in in the first minute. So that was not the, that was not the case, so I just wanted to go on record and say, he reported that, but based on what I said. So, and so you can see how quickly the applications were coming in over, really, that first hour in particular, but you can see in five-minute increments. Just some statistics about the applications we did receive. The average home age of the homes that applied was 37 years old. Homes had to be built in 1994 or prior to qualify. And the breakdown of the age of homes that did apply, we had two that were less than 30 years old, remember that 30 years old was a qualification. So we had two that submitted, that did not qualify. And then we had 445 that fell between 30 and 39 years of age. And then we had 445 that fell between 30 and 39 years of age. 191 that were 40 to 49 years of age. Seven that fell between 50 and 59 years of age. And then six that were, that were 60 years or older. That's the home of the age, I mean, that's the age of the home, not of the occupant. The average home value of the homes that applied was $544,754.49. The lowest home value that applied for a grant was $229,000. The highest home value that applied was $1,246,520. So this is a breakdown on the screen that shows you the home values for the homes that did apply. So you, again, we broke it down in $100,000 increments. Just as you're looking at this, I will tell you that the 2024 average owner-occupied home value in Capel is $597,350. Just so it gives you some perspective on those that applied. We had, you saw the list of projects that could qualify for a grant. And so we, Katie went through and broke down. So several of those that applied, applied for multiple projects. So that's why the numbers you see up there will total more than 696. But we had, you can see 233 that include window replacement, 167 that had fence repair replacement, 230 landscape projects, 101 front door repair projects, 157 facade updates, 50 concrete repair projects, 20 chimney repair projects, and then five that fell kind of in other categories. And then this final slide shows you a map. The, the blue that you see on the screen is every property that applied for a grant and the yellow are the properties that actually received a grant. So you can see the 696 represented up there with 13 of the yellow stars. So you can see that it was spread throughout the entire community, not concentrated in one specific area. Again, this program was executed exactly it was communicated it would be and the grant opening was administered exactly as it was advertised. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have about the grant.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Hurley? Mayor Protem Neves?
Thanks, mayor. Thank you very much for that update. As I think many of us are aware in this chamber, there was quite a lot of excitement about this program. And then I think that there was probably an equal or more amount of disappointment with so many people applying and I would say so few getting a grant. So I just had a couple of questions. And I know that we discussed a lot of these in work sessions. So I would ask any member of the public to, to go back and, and find those videos of us having this discussion, work session. But would you mind kind of describing why $10,000? If we only had $100,000, what was the purpose of the $10,000? Why not a lower amount? Because I did see several people ask about why not a $5,000 or $2,500 grant, if you would please?
Sure. So the $10,000 grant marker was what the Ford Task Force came up with because we thought it was the, the amount that it would, that would cause people to actually do a project. Specifically, when we came up with the list of projects that could qualify, a lot of those are projects that were very costly, such as window replacement. And you saw that was our highest number of projects, I believe, that applied. So the Ford Task Force felt that 10,000 was enough to go ahead and make people take action and, and do something. Knowing that the budget was only $100,000, again, that was just to test the program out. We had no idea what kind of response we would have from the community. As I said, once the article was written and we started getting phone calls, we realized that there was going to be a lot more interest than what we probably originally thought. But again, it was, this program was really just to test it, to see if there was interest in the community. And, and then if it were to be continued, those, all of those things could be tweaked.
A quick follow-up on that. So I mean, would, I, I feel like I'm kind of leading question here. But I mean, would you feel that getting 700 applications, like that shows that this is a, a project and a program that our citizens are interested in?
I would say there's definitely interest in the community for the program. Again, if it was tweaked, would it have the same interest? I have no idea. But I think a lot of people expressed that they were clearly interested in the program. And more importantly, I've heard a lot, from a lot of people that said they were still going to go ahead and do their projects. So in our mind, it was the catalyst that got some people to go ahead and do some investment in their property, which is exactly what we were wanting to do with the program.
Excellent, thank you. And then I guess the, the last question I have is, is, make sure I phrase this right. I'm trying to put together, you know, the feedback that I got and make sure, I mean, do you? You know, I'm going to hold my question. I'm just, for the sake of letting other people answer, I'm going to hold my question for right now.
Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, mayor. And just clarification, mayor, on this, mayor, on this agenda item, this is presentation only, not deliberation of the program. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that that was the case. So my question is not a question, it's just a comment. Thank you, Ms. Hurley, for coming up with this, or the Forward Board coming up with this idea and bringing it to council, finding funds for it and everything, Ms. Crawford. Thank you very much for bringing all the data together. I was very much in favor of this pilot program from the beginning and wanting to know what the data was showing. So thank you for bringing that information back to us because that's very, very helpful from where we started to where we are now. So that's, that's what I'll leave it for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, mayor. Ms. Hurley, I have a question. I also got a number of feedbacks from our residents. I know there were, members were helping residents who were on the queue in the morning or lined up in front of the office. What have we learned from this process? You know, what are the things we can improve going forward if we were to do this again?
Well, we've certainly received a lot of suggestions from the community. And so it would really be you all that would decide what, how you would want to change it, if we were going to tweak it. I know that a lot of people that showed up in person, I think that's what you asked specifically. I'm sorry, you cut out just a little bit. But I know that a lot of people that showed up in person invested a lot of time and showed up early in order to be there to apply in line. So I don't know if it's something we would want to revisit where we wouldn't allow both options. However, the decision was made to allow both in-person and online in order to try to accommodate the entire community because we heard from people on both sides that had concerns if we would have left it just one way or the other. So that would just be something that we would have to talk about if this was something you all wanted to continue on, if you wanted to tweak it, knowing that it, if, it might make some people unable to apply.
So are you saying you are looking for a recommendation or a suggestion from the council on the process?
I, I think if you all want to continue the program, it would be something we'd come back and discuss.
That'll be something, Councilmember Matthew, that we'll take up at a work session where we can have a full discussion on how we want to proceed forward. Should you, should you guys decide to do that?
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem Neves?
Hello, me again. So I think you said this earlier, and I just wanted to reiterate this. From the beginning, knowing the fact that it was going to be $100,000 from the beginning, based on the feedback that you got from the Forward Board, and knowing the, the cost of the projects that would basically, I'm going to finger quote, be impact projects, this was always designed to be a test pilot type of program from the beginning. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, excellent. Thank you.
Right. Any other questions for Ms. Hurley? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Prem Kamor?
Again, on this program, I've also received a lot of feedback. And, and mayor and council, when, when we do talk about this in the work session, I would be bringing up the fact that a lot of people that did want in-person application, there were some concerns about not everyone being tech savvy. So that's something for us to think about. I do have a question, Ms. Hurley. Of the people that showed up in person, did anyone qualify for a loan?
Unfortunately, none of those that showed up in person were in the 13, first 13 applications.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions for Ms. Hurley? Seeing none, thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. Item number 10 is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list your address outside the council chambers. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual's speaker time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the council members present. Persons signed to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, the mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Records Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary or mayor will cut in and make the request to the city council if they would like to extend the speaker's time for another two minutes. We do have one person that has signed up to speak tonight, and that's Ms. Kristi Gilbert. Ms. Gilbert?
Thank you, mayor.
Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Christine Gilbert. I live at 347 Timber Ridge Lane in Capel, Texas. I wanted to speak about the grant program. Surprise, surprise. I had some suggestions that I just wanted to share with y'all. First thing is, I think more weight should be given to rehab projects that are more visible to the community, to the public. Could more consideration be given to someone needing five front windows over another needing just two and then three in the back? Why not give money, why not give money that adds to visible beauty over just a part of the project needs to be like an eyesore? The second thing is, financial need was not a factor. I think it should be a factor. I think there's a big difference in a real need for something to be fixed versus someone's wish, wish list to upgrade. And what determines if a project is an eyesore or just someone wanting the, the latest and greatest windows or whatever? The third thing on the guidelines, it wasn't specified whether applying in-person or online gave a better chance for success. And now I know that those that came in person, none of them received it. So really, it was an option, but then it wasn't an option because all of them lost out on the opportunity. You had to do it online. The last thing was, there was a race to get the application in on time, and that seemed to be the most important qualification. But when you do that, you exclude many people that aren't able to get to their computer on time. Some people have physical limitations. Some people have irritable bowel syndrome. I'm not saying that I do, but I'm saying that there are many physical limitations. My limitation happens to be sometimes I can't walk. I cannot put pressure on my foot. I got injured at the dog park in January. So some people don't sleep right and just being up, having to be mentally alert right at 8 o'clock, get in on that link, think straight, put things in. Here's the link, ready, set, go, 8 o'clock, the first ones get it. I think that, I'm sorry, my time is up, but I just hope that my perspective gives you all...
Counsel, can we, are you going to have another two minutes?
Well, thank you. I just believe that there should be maybe more qualifications other than what was spelled out, that, that this really truly wasn't open to everybody. The ones that came in person, all of them were excluded because they didn't meet the time. It was when the first so many minutes they were able to. Another thing that I thought of, but now I have extra time, is why not reward those people that try to help out the community? I'm not saying I'm one, but you know, what do you do for Capel? Do you go one week after the July 4th picnic and pick up all the debris from the celebration that's at Andrew Brown East by yourself with no recognition? There are people, I'm not saying I did it, I did. But what about people, instead of just taking, taking, reward our givers? So I just think that maybe a little more thought, a little more qualifications and guidelines could, could make maybe less people apply so it's not so burdensome to have to review each one. But really, I guess it's not a burden if you're just going first come, first served. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Item number 11 is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally imposed, approved in one motion. The items are rotating through the screen. Any item may be pulled by any member of the council. These items have been either previously considered by the council in previous sessions, are approved through previous actions. Counsel, is there any desire to request an item be pulled? Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, mayor. So I did have a question, but I can deal with it at work session afterwards. But if we've already approved it, then it kind of seems silly. So I didn't know how you'd like to proceed. I don't want to pull it necessarily, it's just more of a question than a objection.
So go ahead and ask your question.
Okay. Well, it relates to the full genetics. So in Article III of the Tax Abatement Agreement, they're, they're agreeing to taxable value for the tangible personal property of at least $5 million as of the first year of abatement and for every year thereafter. So, I mean, if you look at Article V, the default and recapture provision, you know, we would claw back all the money that they'd been paid in incentive if they go into default. But what would be a, what would be considered an acceptable cure if, due to just their nature, their business, something happened with respect to their inventory or whatever, that their tangible personal property as of January 1st just happened to be 4.9 million? So it was a technical default, but not one that would really merit a clawback of all they'd been paid in the years prior.
Ms. Hurley?
In that situation, if you all wanted to go ahead and grant that, that incentive for that year, we could certainly, so if they just did not meet the $5 million for that year, they just would not qualify for their incentive that year. They wouldn't have to claw back, pay back all of the incentive that they had received. However, if you all still wanted to grant it, that would be y'all's purview to do so and we could bring it to you. But typically, how it works is a year that they don't meet that investment, they just don't get their abatement that year.
Okay, okay. No, that's great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Seeing none, I would accept a motion. Councilmember Brianna Hinojosa-Smith?
Thank you, mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Seconded by Councilmember Walker. All in favor?
Walker, Hinojosa-Smith, Carol, Neves, Prem Kamor, and Matthew, all in favor? Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Item number 12 is a presentation regarding the ARPA final allocation. Ms. Leach?
Hello. Good evening, mayor and council. I am here tonight to speak with you on the, what we hope will be the final conversation around the ARPA allocation that was awarded to the city of Capel. So the purpose of tonight's briefing, I am seeking direction from the council on the remaining unobligated balance of the ARPA dollars that were allocated to us. I will walk you through just a very brief recap of the timeline. I will provide you a really quick recap of the current obligations that in previous work sessions, you all as the council have provided direction to go ahead and fund via ARPA dollars. And then I will walk through a summary of the proposed projects for the final allocation of the unobligated ARPA dollars. So in September, August and September of 2021, the city received $10.2 million in ARPA funding. That came in two separate payments. We have until December of 2024 to officially obligate all of those dollars. And we have until December 2026 to spend all of those dollars. Anything that is left unspent as of December 31st, 2026, gets sent back to the federal government. So this is just a summary of all of the projects that have been completed to date. And the most recent of those is the residential rehab pilot program that Ms. Hurley just reviewed with you all. with you all. All of those total just over $5.7 million, so just over half of the allocation that's been awarded to us. This is a listing of all of the current projects that are underway, so they have been allocated by the council. They are in various stages of completion. I want to highlight three projects for you this evening. They are denoted with the asterisks, and those are projects that have, the funding amount has changed for various reasons. So the first one on that list is Woven Clinic, and we have been in conversation with Woven around kind of the utilization and forecasting what that would look like through the end of their contract, which is December 2024. And based on the utilization, this is the revised amount that we've agreed that, based on the utilization pace, that's about what we're going to expend. The next one I'd like to highlight is Magnolia Park Bid Flexibility. So when we, I was before you all the last time, we were in the process of bidding that project for construction. We did not know where that was going to come in. We thought it might cost a little bit more, just based on all of the bids we've been receiving. We had earmarked $650,000 for the bid flexibility item. Those bids came in very favorably, and so we are only allocating $280,705 for that particular project. And the last item I'd like to highlight is the Life Safety Park Concrete Sealant and Restriping Project. That was initially allocated and estimated at $65,000. Clearly, that came in at a much more favorable amount, so that project is completed, that's almost completed, but we know that project's going to come in about $31,000. So those are the projects that have changed from when you saw this last time. So we'll go through a little bit of math. So our total ARPA funding of $10.8 million, if you net out the completed and the current obligations, that leaves us with an unobligated balance of $665,463. We have, because of the favorable interest environment that we are in right now, from a cash flow perspective, we have, we are projecting to earn $612,314 in interest on all of those funds. So, the number that we will be speaking about tonight from, in terms of what should be obligated and what I will be proposing to you tonight, is $1,277,777. The projects that I will walk through with you tonight would pretty much take up all but 300 and change, $300, in change of that amount. So, there are five different project categories, and I will, I'd like to share a little bit of how we came up with the projects that you will see tonight. The criteria that we used to create this list, all of the projects, first of all, were expenditures that we were originally planning for our fiscal year '25 budget. So all of the projects minus one, the pickleball feasibility, which is currently already underway, but everything else in the list tonight has made it through our budget process vetting. So from a priority standpoint, from the departments, it's gone through all of our internal departments, if it was a piece of equipment, if it was a facility improvement for something that needed to be replaced, all of the traditional vetting that we go through as part of our budget process, all of that has occurred for all of these projects that are before you tonight. The second thing is, everything is a one-time purchase, so we are not proposing ARPA funds for anything that is an ongoing recurring cost for us. And finally, this ARPA funding, frankly, it allowed us to address some of the concerns that we've heard from the community, from the council, for the things that are important in terms of service provision and programming for our community. And we will go through each one of these categories here. So we'll start in the first chart. These are all of the projects that are in the public safety bucket, and so you'll notice the word "replace" on almost all of those. The top three are all replacements of fire equipment, that is frontline fire equipment. They're all at end of life. The last item in that category is to add security cameras over at the biodiversity education center. If you've ever been over there, you know that you walk a long way, almost a quarter mile to get from parking lot to the facility itself. So we do need some additional camera coverage along that walk, as well as both interior and exterior to the building that itself that are currently not covered. In terms of our capital project support, we are proposing to supplement and offset any $420,000 of the Veterans Memorial Construction. So that is a project that we have currently not bid, so we do not have a full construction price yet. You all have seen kind of the last iteration from a design standpoint of where we were. I've got direction from you there. We are proposing to use ARPA money to help supplement that construction project. The last two on this slide are what we're calling just kind of consultant services. So the first here, just, public engagement is one of the highest priorities from a council perspective, to help us understand where the community, what they think about, all of the things that we do. Helps you in decision-making, helps us in decision-making as well. And then I mentioned the pickleball feasibility study that is currently underway, and we are just proposing to use ARPA funds instead of city funds to fund that study. I should note before I leave this slide, so the asterisk under the capital projects, so there is a chance that if we spend money faster than what we think in our projections, or if we don't earn as much as we think, or if some of the projects that we are proposing cost more than we are proposing, where we would flex some of all of that, all of those variations would be in our capital project category. Moving on to facility improvements, we've got, you'll notice again, the word "replace" on a number of those items. So all of those items that have "replace" next to them, they are at end of life and are recommended for replacement at each of those various locations. There are three at the bottom, which are new, so the metal fence installation over there at Wagon Wheel, that is to replace the wooden fence that's there now. And so that wooden fence is rotting, and on top of that, it doesn't provide any barrier at all if you have a soccer ball that gets kicked in that direction. So this metal fencing will help in that regard. The MacArthur Park fencing replacement, so that is not the fencing that was installed a couple of years ago along MacArthur to help with discourage those users of the park from running into MacArthur. There is this older fencing along where folks park, so if you go to that park, there's some parking that you access from the neighborhood. All of that railing and fencing along there, much older and in much worse condition, and so that's what that funding would be, to replace all of that fencing. And then over at Fire Administration, the lobby reconfiguration that we're proposing there will allow for better circulation, better security, so that we can see folks coming in, a more welcoming environment as our vendors come in, employees, that sort of thing. And then equipment purchases, all of, all of the, well, two-thirds of that list, you will notice the word, again, "replace." So these are all items that are at their end of life and are being recommended for replacement through our fleet department in concert with our departments, our user departments. We are proposing for new purchases, and those are listed at the bottom of your screen there. So just as a recap, I am seeking some direction and counsel consideration on the funding for these projects via ARPA dollars. So just, if any of these projects you do not want to spend ARPA dollars on, fantastic, they will be rolled into the budget process, and they'll go through the budget process. So I'll be happy to answer questions that you have, and...
I think we have a few.
Sure.
Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. First, Ms. Leach, I just want to commend you for the diligence that you've shown throughout this process, and frankly, your masterful navigation of the ARPA law, and the benefit you've brought to our community by virtue of that. So, you know, this is, you really did a fantastic job, just to kind of sum up.
Thank you. A lot of hands in that.
Yeah.
Frankly, our strategic financial engagement department gets all the kudos for that compliment, so I appreciate that.
Well, let me apply that to all of them, then.
Yes.
By all means, I'll accept your amendment.
There we go. Thank you.
So, that's perfectly fine. And like I said before, with respect to the, with respect to the grant program that we just discussed, we pay out millions of dollars a year out of this community in federal income tax. So, you know, the fact that we have a chance to get some of that back and to apply it in a way, as you've done, which I think is amazing, that really helps to also mitigate, you know, our tax burden next year with respect to the rate, and by applying it to things we would have paid, you know, paid for anyways, I think, and things that we really need that are end-of-life items, I think is a very wise and very wise stewardship with respect to this money, and I want to thank you and your team for everything that you've done for it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of logistic questions. So on some of those, I think Metrocrest was one, there may have been, I know Woven was one of them, but if by chance we don't spend all those funds, or, let me rephrase, we think we're going to spend all the funds that we're allocating to that, is that, we don't think we'll have any trouble getting to the, I don't remember what the Metrocrest number was, but 375 or whatever it is?
Their utilization is tracking closer.
Okay.
So if we don't spend all of those dollars, we will, if it looks like we need to, and we're getting close, we will reallocate that to the capital projects.
To something else, okay. And so the reverse of that also, what if we, what if, it actually, if a project takes more funds than what we have allocated, we'll just dip into, well, general fund or capex fund or something, right?
Well, we will take the money that was, that we have earmarked for Veterans Memorial. That's where all of that flex will come.
It will come out of that one.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because this is only going to be a piece of the Veterans Memorial to begin with, right?
That will be a component, yes.
Okay, so that will be the excess funds if we need them.
Correct.
Somewhere else. So that one, everything else will take priority over that. And then, the equipment that, like, a number of those equipment things were replacement. I'm assuming they will still be on a capital replacement schedule going forward?
Yes.
That will be funded appropriately?
Yes.
Like we do now on this current schedule?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, any other, Councilmember Prem Kumar?
Quick clarification, so between now and December of this year, if we do find an project that is high priority, we'll have some flexibility to bring that into this ARPA funding program, correct?
Timing would be important for that conversation. So, in theory, yes, if there was a very high priority project that was brought to your attention that needed to be brought to our attention, there is, there is time to do that. It would, the timing would really dictate how feasible that would be.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Neves?
Thank you very much for the presentation. So just, just so I can kind of make sure I understand, so we're really, tonight, the ask is really for us to lock in, and this kind of be the final direction that you're seeking in this, is that correct?
That is correct. This is the sixth time I have been here to talk about ARPA. I'm sure y'all are...
I thought it was your favorite thing to talk about.
I'm sure, I love it. I'm sure y'all have got other things you'd like to be talking about.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we put that out there. So, I do have a question. So let's say that we wanted to, I do agree with Councilmember Walker. I think that the navigation of understanding what projects would qualify and, you know, what expenditures can be applied, or the ARPA funds can be applied to, I think is, it's been a lot of work put into that. I did have a question, though. You said all of these had been identified before. Do all of these, you know, with this 1.3 million, do they have alternative funding sources if we choose to use those or not use the ARPA funds?
Yes, so they were all, as I mentioned, they were all previously planned for our fiscal year '25 budget. They all had funding sources assigned to them, so they were varying from general fund to CRDC, so this would save all those funds having to spend those dollars on this particular set of items.
No, I got you, okay. So I did have a question, obviously, we just had a presentation about the rehab grants, and I don't know if this might be better, but, you know, I know with that being a test program for rehab grants, obviously with it being a test, if council decides they like the program and they wanted to continue, what, what would the funding sources look like? And I mean, obviously, we had a great demand for that. You know, I do like the idea of using federal tax dollars to fund a program like that versus property tax or sales tax. So was there any idea of what the continuation of that plan might look like from y'all's perspective or the community experience's perspective?
Well, so I can speak from the ARPA side. So if, if we were directed by this council that that program, the continuation or Phase 2.0 of that program were to continue on, we would, we have time and flexibility now to make that change, to accommodate that direction. The other component from just a budget standpoint, in addition, so the ARPA funds allowed us to accelerate the pilot program for the residential rehab. Staff had already plugged in and planned for funding of that program, but that was not going to hit until fiscal year '26. So that was in our five-year forecast. So that funding is still in the five-year forecast, it does not appear until fiscal year '26.
What was the amount on that five-year forecast, if you could remind us, please?
$200,000.
So $200,000 on an annual basis going forward in that, so in that forecast, that would, okay, all right. I just want to make sure that everybody kind of understood that. I mean, I'll speak to this council. I would, I would love to have a discussion, if we're going to talk about this, on potentially reallocating some funds towards this rehabilitation grant program. I mean, obviously, we had an outpouring of support of people that wanted to take advantage of this, so I just would love to know the temperature of everyone else here tonight. Would y'all like to use some of these funds and expand the program?
Councilmember Carol?
So, in response to that, because we're teetering on deliberation of that other program also, which I think is sort of a different topic, I guess I would propose that we, well, I was going to propose that we go with what Ms. Leach said for these funds, and we would deliberate the other separately. Since we, since we're not going to deliberate that here tonight, the other fund, I think we should give Ms. Leach the go-ahead. So that would be my thought.
Councilmember Hinojosa-Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess that's kind of where I was coming from as well, is I'd love to move forward on what you proposed, which, by the way, thank you very much for that and for your entire team. And then, I don't know if there's a time that we can do it, we've got retreat coming up, but I, as Councilmember Neves mentioned, or Mayor Protem Neves mentioned, I want to make sure that we also do have that conversation, knowing that there is a need, and, and that's what we're hearing from our citizens as well. So I would like to have that conversation.
Councilmember Carol?
I'll just make one more statement, because I, I guess I see it, it's in one pocket or out of another pocket. It's all, I mean, ultimately, it's all one...
Bucket.
Bucket of funds that gets used. I mean, if we use ARPA funds for X, that frees up money somewhere else, or if we use ARPA money for the rehabilitation program, it, you know, that, that means we have to spend on these capital projects somewhere else. So it's all one bucket of money ultimately, so I don't know that it matters if we're quote "using ARPA funds." I guess that's sort of where I'm thinking about this.
So what I did hear Ms. Leach say, and correct me if I'm wrong?
Yes.
But you were able to stay within the budget by using the ARPA funds, you had accelerated some of the purchases that were shown, so...
Yes.
I think to Councilmember Carol's standpoint, it's, you know, like the, like his famous levers, you pull one and the other one goes up or down. We can certainly have that discussion, though, as part of our workshop.
Absolutely.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And appreciate the sixth time you've been here.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is the... Item number 13 is the city manager reports with project updates for future agendas and direction from work session, which we have not had yet.
No. Mayor and council, thank you. There's some in-between information here before we talk about the storm cleanup. Yes, South Belt Line is open, and yes, there is still work being done. DART has continued to work on franchise relocations at Freeport and the storm drain installation at Freeport. Woodhurst, the contractor, has poured the westbound lane from Sandy Knoll to the cul-de-sac. The Andy Brown Park West Steam Bank, steam, steam, it's been a long day, folks, stream bank repair. The temporary repair, if you know, along that trail is complete. Site cleanup and interim fencing is being installed before the trail can be reopened. Fire station number five, we have the groundbreaking coming up in June. I think it's all on your calendars. The master plan for community experiences for parks and recreation. The next public input meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June 6th, at 6:00 PM at the Arts Center. The community input survey will also go live on June 1st. The link to the survey will be available on the website and all social media channels. We all woke up this morning to a lot of down limbs, down trees, some folks had fences that were damaged. We haven't heard very much at all about any homes that were impacted. We did hear about one where a tree limb fell on a home, but the crews began working early this morning, removing the trees from the roadways and the public right-of-way. Some of the trees, obviously, are along HOA properties or individual property owners. Those are the responsibility of the HOA or the individual property owners for the final cleanup. The, this evening, an Everbridge message was sent out to all our residents to remind them of the couple of things. One, for example, tomorrow is Green Waste Pickup Day. And so, if you have small limbs that you can bundle up, or even some branches that you can bundle up in four-foot sections, they have to be tied. Those will be picked up on Wednesdays from here on out, basically. But it's real important, so I want to stress this, it's real important that they are tied, because the trucks in the alleys are, you know, they're manpower, right? And so, the weight can't be too heavy, more than 50 pounds, I believe. 40 pounds, okay? More than 40 pounds, but they have to be tied because of the way the truck is configured and everything along. If they are not tied, they will not be picked up. And that's consistent with what we do any other time, so that is not new because of the down trees or down limbs, so they have to be tied. Secondly, related to the larger limbs, if the larger limbs, if you can cut them up a little bit, that's great, but the main thing is get them out to the space between the sidewalk and the curb, and that's where they will be picked up. Staff is working with Republic Waste as far as a calendar or schedule for pickup. And if you remember in 2019 when we went through this, it takes a while, plus when you add the fact that this was basically Denton County, Dallas County, Tarrant County as far as the storm, working out that schedule and that calendar of when all things are going to be picked up, it's going to be a few weeks. So we just ask for everybody just to be patient. We know that you don't like it, having those limbs out in your front yard. So, right now, it appears that the schedule at the earliest would be June 10th, and that, I don't have a concrete date, but that seems to be the earliest date that some of those large limbs will start being picked up, if we can get that scheduled. So, it does not have to be tied up up front, because they are bringing in a grappler truck, basically, to be able to pick up the, the trees and everything. Another thing that's happening is we engaged the Neighbors Helping Neighbors email list, so I believe that contact started today, if I'm correct. And we have been in contact with some of the more elderly or senior residents in town already who are grateful of being able to get help, and we're trying to connect those and the neighbors and neighbors who helped and volunteered with those that have the particular need. That email went out to those who had signed up for the Neighbors Helping Neighbors for the last three years, if I understand correctly. So we went to an extensive list of folks asking for volunteers to help their neighbors through this. The other thing is tomorrow, the tool truck, I, tool truck, tool trailer, these are all tongue-twisters at this late at night. The tool trailer will be made available starting tomorrow. It's the same sign-up process as far as the tools are concerned, so that the tools are signed out, making sure that people are trained and know how to use a chainsaw and those type of things. That's something to always be really careful of as well. So, the cleanup will continue. We realize that it's going to take a while. The other thing that's compounding a little bit of the wait-and-see is tomorrow morning, Wednesday morning at 4 o'clock, we're supposed to, AM, we're supposed to have the next round of storms. It is supposed to be raining on Thursday and Friday as well. So, that's part of the reason why Republic is waiting, is to see what these storms bring, to get an idea of just what is the scale of the issue in Capel, knowing full well that they service other communities. We have other options that are going to be available to us, and we are exploring those options as we speak. But we will make every effort to work with our residents. We just ask that our residents also be patient, knowing full well that it's going to take a while to clean this up. Additionally, we still have, according to Chief Richardson, it appears we still have about a quarter of the community that is still without electricity. So, tomorrow, when we check in, we'll, we'll see where we are as far as that goes, to see if there's any particular needs that we have to address. One of the questions that gets asked, I believe Chief Richardson indicated, there are about, was it 50 or so elderly or in special needs-type residents that we have, are required to be in contact with because of their particular needs. They were able to reach about half of them earlier today, which meant the other half, they were going to have to go out and basically knock on the doors and check on them to make sure that they're okay as well. So, everything is being done possible to make sure that the streets are clear, that things are being done safely. We appreciate our residents in helping our neighbors. We do not go, some of the phone calls we received today is, "I have a tree down in my backyard, can the city come and do that?" No, that's on private property, right? So it's up to the resident to do that. The other thing to remember is, the reason why we're trying to get the word out now about the situation is, because those limbs and bundling and tying those off go to the alley, we don't want people dragging those big limbs to the alley because the grappler truck can't get into the alley. So that's why those need to go out towards the curb, between the sidewalk and the curb. So the messaging is really important. Y'all are probably going to get tired of seeing that message, but it's just one of those things, repetition is going to be so important. The other thing, too, that, not only with the weather, is we also know that people are contacting contractors. One of the things that we found out in 2019 is if you're, if you are privately contracting with someone to cut the limbs up, be very careful and cautious, because one of the things that we found out is people were saying, "Well, I paid them for cutting it up and everything and hauling it off, and all they did was take it to the curb, so we were the ones getting the call for not picking it up soon enough, and people were upset because they had paid the contractor to haul it away, and yet that's not what they did," right? So, be very careful with the folks, and there are going to be a lot of folks coming into town who are going to offer to cut limbs, right, for you, and they'll say they'll haul them off, next thing you know, they're hauling off is actually waiting on the city to haul it off by putting it at the curb. So if you're paying for it, make sure it happens and it's not out in front of your, your house. You paid for hauling it off, make sure it does. The other thing, too, is a lot of people have trailers, so there is provision for free, once a month, if you will, drop-off at the landfill, and that information is on our webpage. So, so folks, if they come together and load up a trailer, as long as they have a driver's license and a water utility bill, when they show up at the landfill, they can drop that inform, that information, they can drop the debris off there as well. So there are a lot of options available to our residents. Having someone do it and haul it off, it will be the fastest way to make sure that it happens. Other than that, I believe, you know, you're looking at two to three to four weeks at best of a lot of this debris sitting out on the curb. So, it just takes time, there's so much of it. And as I said, we'll be looking at some other alternatives to possibly speed it up, but until we're ready to announce those, I'm going to hold off. So, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Item number 14 is mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. I did want to talk about our visit. The council went down to our INTEC, which is the North Texas Emergency Communications Center in Carrollton a week ago. Councilmembers Walker, Carroll, Hinojosa Smith, Premen Kamar, and Matthews joined us down, and as we listened to their executive director and his entire staff talk about how the emergency communication system works, and we just think of it as picking up our cell phone and calling into a number, and it gets routed to our police department or our fire department or whoever the appropriate agency is. We learned it's much more complicated than that. And my appreciation for the INTEC was that their primary function is to be able to receive the myriad of 9/11 calls that come in from many, many different sources and sort through those. Yes, the cell phone input is one of those, but 911 has many, many different sources, and they are very able to pick up the phone very quickly. I think they're averaging like a nine-second response on a, on a answering and a 37-second response to routing the, the call to the appropriate agency. And I, maybe, Hinojosa, Councilmember Hinojosa Smith will help me with my memory, but back when we did this, we were averaging over a minute on a call time, and over, I can't remember, it was 45 seconds on the answering, so we were, we were really struggling to meet the, the quality of service that our residents wanted. And that was when we engaged with Carrollton Farmers Branch and Addison to create the INTEC. And it's, it was actually a very remarkable site, and I'm glad I wasn't there this morning, because I'm sure they were very busy. But they've done a very good job of bringing our quality of service, our emergency operations to a very high level. And I wanted to thank the city manager for suggesting that we go visit them, because that was a very educational trip, I hope, for everybody. All right, on to the item number 15. Councilmember, council reports concerning items of community involvement with no council action or deliberation permitted. Woven Health Clinic was to be done by Councilmember Mark Hill. Unfortunately, he got stuck in the Austin Airport and is currently driving home in lieu of taking the flight, so we apologize for that. Item B is the Capel Historical Society. Councilmember Brianna Hinojosa Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have one quick announcement. On June 8th at 1:00 PM, we're going to have our first quarterly Capel History Talks lecture at Cosby Library. It's going to be presented by the Executive VP in DFW International Airport. And so, we're encouraging everyone to come and listen to what is the first of many Capel History Talks and lectures, and it's just a good opportunity to learn the history of Capel, and ask any questions, and just see what we're doing to help preserve the history that we have here. So, that's the only thing I have on the Historical Society, but I just want to take a minute to just thank the city manager and his office and all our first responders for everything that they've done today. I can see it on social media and got messages, but you guys have done such a phenomenal job of responding to everyone with something that was completely, I think, unexpected, because I didn't know that weather was coming, and you guys do a great job of giving us a heads up. But I drove, I drove in it and saw the debris everywhere, and even already this afternoon, so much has been cleaned up. And I know that you guys have done a great job of cleaning up, responding, and making sure that, that those citizens and needs are taken care of, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number 16 is a public service announcement concerning items of community interests with no council action or deliberation. Councilmember Hinojosa Smith already took care of one of those, so do we have any? Mayor Protem Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor. I definitely wanted to echo what Councilmember Hinojosa Smith said, and I also wanted to encourage all of our citizens to make sure that they're signed up for the alert system. I mean, this morning alone, I received an alert at 4:54 AM, 5:35 AM, and 5:48 AM, letting us know, and then I had my children come, give me the fourth alert as of what was going on. But just a reminder that you can sign up for those alerts, you can sign up, is it on the website, I believe, at capeltx.gov? You can sign up for that, and you'll get those alerts sent to your phone. And it, they have been incredibly important, so I just encourage every citizen out there, take advantage of that service that the city offers to try to keep you informed about what's going on. I mean, we want to make sure that everybody is as safe as possible. And again, kudos to the city manager's office and the entire city, our first responders out there, our entire city. I mean, I saw a member of our Enterprise Services team that had boots ready to go out there and go help people today. So, just, the entire city for always willing to step up and serve our citizens and our city, it is greatly appreciated.
So as a follow-up to, to my little talk about the INTEC, as a public service announcement, between 5:00 AM and 8:00 AM this morning, INTEC processed 1,243 calls. That was a factor of 10 higher, they normally do about 125 during that same period of time, and they sent out 168 calls for emergency service, which is significantly higher than the usual 35 during that same timeframe. They, so they, as I said, they were extremely busy this morning and, and took care of business, and we really appreciate all the work that they did. So thank you very much. Item number 17, there was no action necessary from executive session, so we are going to recess from the regular session of the Capel City Council and reconvene into work session in the first-floor conference room, and the public is invited to join us. Mark, was that Marcus? It's on the agenda, one of it is a discussion regarding the agenda items. We're going to skip that one. We're, we're in session, guys. Thank you.
I was listening.
And item B is a discussion regarding service organizations, and Jessica is going to be presenting, I believe.
Welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
For waiting up for us.
Just in case I'm here. It's awesome to be here. I would, I would.
Thank you.
You can, you can.
Thank you. Y'all are idiots. I blocked it, right?
Just in case it's easier to see them.
The alarm that went off.
Some people.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I just pulled it up. But it's not four o'clock in the morning either.
No.
Yeah, it's a big wave coming from the west.
Maybe we do it early.
Should I punch you now or punch you later?
All right, that's it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. The purpose of this agenda item is twofold. First, we would like to just preview to you the list of applicants who submitted requests for the Service and Arts Organization funding for fiscal year twenty-five. We also would like to seek direction on whether the mayor and council would like to add or remove any organizations from the list of organizations that should present at the Budget Workshop in July. And this is all going to be based on the guidelines provided by council in a memo dated August thirtieth, twenty sixteen and updated on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. So based on these guidelines, three organizations are currently on the list. The special funding application process for service and art organizations does occur once a year. This effort aims to support critical service needs, arts and culture, and special interest organizations that benefit the residents of Capel. This year, we opened the application period from April first to April twenty-eighth and we did receive a total of seventeen applicants. Out of these applications, three organizations met the criteria to present at the Budget Workshop in July. The updated guidelines from April twenty-three, twenty twenty-four specify that organizations required to present must either be new applicants or have requested an amount above twenty thousand with an increase of more than fifty percent from the previous year. The remaining organizations qualified to receive funding but are not required to present under this criteria. In your agenda packet, you will find a chart, which you have, and also in the top of the memo included in your council packet, you will see the list of the three organizations required to present, again, based on the criteria outlined in the updated guidelines.
So I'm sorry, which, three of those?
The organizations are the three new organizations, which is Capel Arts Center Foundation, Capel Special Olympics, and Love Thy Neighbor.
They're all in gray, not blue.
So those are the ones, the new ones are in gray.
Oh, 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 okay.
The blue ones are the ones that qualify for hot.
These are only, they're only?
The three are new, yes. So in the column, on the no column, that indicates where the application is a new request and shows a dollar amount and percentage increase or decrease from last year's request. So, Mayor and Council, we are here this evening to receive your direction on adding or removing any organizations from the list of the three present to present at the July Budget Workshop. So at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Yes.
Oh, Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you. Great presentation. So I'm just not familiar with Love Thy Neighbor. A little information on that, I mean, it sounds like a nice organization.
Sounds lovely.
Sounds good.
So my, Love Thy Neighbor, from the information that we have, they are an organization that provides, they provide a lot to the North Texas region and they do a lot with clothing and food. They have a good clothing closet for people who are in need and also provide food. But I would recommend that there's more additional information that you want, would want, be interested in that organization.
Are they, are they a Capel organization? Or are they larger statewide or county or something like that?
It seems like they're like a North Texas region organization. And they do provide, based on the information they provided, that they survey some Capel residents as well.
That was my next question. Thank you so much.
And that's part of their presentation, cover that in detail?
Oh, they'll be here. Okay, I'm sorry, that's right, they're gray. Yes, thank you. Okay, very nice.
Councilmember Carroll?
I withdraw my question. I don't get it.
Is that because I made you sit down?
I made you sit down.
Councilmember Premon Kumar?
I know the Woven Community Clinic, even though they asked for a hundred and thirty-one percent increase, it is below the twenty thousand dollar guideline, so we are not asking them to come in. But will this, as a staff, will you be reviewing the application and you would come back to us with a recommendation on up or down, correct?
That would be a council direction if they want to, if you want to see them during the July Budget Workshop, we more than certainly can add them to the list and they can probably provide more details.
I think the question is, we do not make a recommendation. The council, the council goes through the, traditionally, the council goes through the list and y'all, through consensus, decide whether or not you fund them.
I, let me rephrase my question. If we went with the assumption that it was below twenty thousand dollars, we don't have to have a presentation. I'm assuming that the staff would still go through the application and validate the request is, is that?
A valid request?
Yes.
They do that, that's what's? That's why it's on this list. That's why it's on the list. They've already gone through that.
Okay, you already done that, okay.
So basically? The valid. This is going to be the number. Right. Unless we decide to change it, you're going to be asked to approve.
Understood, understood. So I just wanted to make sure that the staff has gone through the application. So I think they answered it, thank you.
I think actually Kevin was first.
I wanted to, to ask council about this. So I see the Capel Historical Museum. In twenty-two, twenty-three, if I remember the presentation that was given, they were asking for a two-year ask of kind of this over a hundred thousand amount. And now it looks like, if I remember correctly, I believe that's what they said, and now it looks like they're not only continuing that, but increasing their ask to a hundred thou, a hundred and thirty thousand. So I am very curious as to, with the initial discussion about that, I would love to see them come and present because this is kind of beyond that initial two-year, kind of two hundred thousand-ish dollar ask that they had originally done, so.
So Brianna, I know you're new to the Historical Society. Did you have any insight to that?
I, I don't, I, actually, they haven't had a meeting since I just joined, so I actually don't have any insight, but, well, when you're done, I'll go.
Yeah, no, that's.
Because I had the same question.
Yeah, no, and that's all I'm asking, is I think that we should get a presentation from that group simply because they did establish that this was going to be a two-year ask. And I, I mean, to be very frank, like, you know, there's been a little bit of creep there, so I just want to make sure that if that number is going up, that we understand what the long-term viability of this is.
That's the second largest allocation that we give out.
So I, I am just asking if we could get them to present.
Is everybody okay putting them on the list to present?
Yes.
Please add the Historical Society.
The museum.
Yeah, the museum, yes.
Not the society, I apologize.
And I do want to be clear, I definitely appreciate the criteria that was, that was presented and adopted, but it really is because that was initially a two-year ask.
Well, it's a good, good point.
No, I think that's great.
I didn't, I didn't know, thanks for bringing it up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brianna?
So I had a question, um, for clarification, for those of you who were on that committee, it was if it's twenty thousand or more, or if it, I thought if it was also if it increases fifty percent or more, is that right?
Both, both things.
Both things, okay. So I guess because I want to go back to Ramesh's question on Woven Community Clinic, because it went from sixty-five hundred to fifteen, I mean, from, yeah, sixty-five hundred to fifteen thousand, so that's more than fifty percent of an ask.
But it's under twenty thousand.
But it's under twenty, okay. I actually, and I know we need four yeses, but I actually think that's a significant increase and would like to understand why. And so I would like to add Woven Community Clinic to the list. Like, I know what they do, I guess it would be educational for you, Ramesh, if you wanted to, but I know what they do, but I'd like to understand that increase. And is this a one-time, I guess we know that, right? It's not a one-time ask?
It's, they would state in the application and, to my understanding, it's not.
Okay, so.
Since I'm a non-voting member, I would tend to agree with you because I was under the impression that we were funding them at the percent level that they were servicing Capel residents.
So that's where I'd like to understand those numbers and what that is coming from, right? So that, my ask is for that one. I actually was also going to bring up the Capel Historical Museum and so unfortunately, I don't have any information as I just joined and haven't had a chance to chat with them. But I think considering the amount and the background, that I would, I guess all that to say is I agree with that one, so.
Is everybody okay with bringing Woven on as well?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
So add, add them to the list.
What'd you say, Kevin?
I thumbs upped it, man, I'm sorry. I failed you.
Yeah, that's all I had, thank you.
You're grouchy down there.
It's passive better.
It's the candy. He didn't have his favorite candy.
Okay, I, I find it interesting, just a couple of comments. Now that we put the fifty percent thing in, in play, I'm, you know, the, the number is going up and it's not, I'm not, it's not a bad thing. Some of the ones that I thought were going to go up didn't and some of the ones I wasn't expecting to did, so.
Yeah. I agree.
If you want to follow it.
No, no.
Okay, understood.
Done.
So I guess we've already got the consensus on Woven. I guess, because I've actually got a question on Assistant League, I mean, there's a number of them that are not a hundred percent increases, but they are material increases, but they're still small. And that was a little bit of the spirit of the guidance, is it's relatively small and we know them, Woven's a good example. We rely on what they submit in their application. And so while I had some questions on some of these increases, I believe, Jessica tell me if I'm wrong, that they, they do provide an application of what they're going to spend the money on, right? We just have not seen all that information yet. And we would see that by budget time, right? When we actually are making the decision. So I guess I would, I was going to suggest that we rely on that for Woven even and not have them present just because we will get information from Woven in their application that should explain what they're going to spend this money on. That was going to be my proposal because of the, and it comes back to the materiality of the number.
I, I hear you and I still would like to hear from them. Just because they, because it is based on percentage of our citizens that they serve and a lot of them are like that, right? Like Metrocrest as well. And I would just like to have a better understanding because then, the following year, then I think I would feel more comfortable with, okay, they went up, you know, and it increased, but they were seeing a trend. I don't know. I, I think just for me, based on the numbers and the fact that it's just fifty percent increase versus a smaller percentage, I, I'd like to hear from them and, and understand what's driving that.
But it's not different on some of these others that are, they're not a hundred and thirty-three percent increases, but they're fifty percent or?
Who, who has increased?
Well, the top, well, ALC up there.
Well, they didn't, and that's where I'm confused, because they went from five, oh, okay. So that's, this is where I was confused on ALC, just real quick, because it says fifty percent increase, but we awarded them, they, okay, so they asked, we allocated five thousand and they've now requested seventy-five hundred.
Fifty percent.
So how is that a fifty percent increase?
Twenty-five hundred out of five thousand?
Oh, that's not?
That's fifty percent.
Oh, yeah.
Same thing on bail.
Oh, sorry, I was looking for double, I was looking for a hundred percent, sorry.
Same thing on, on some of them.
It's, I'm tired.
Mike?
Yeah, I was just going to add, so a couple of things, you, you, you made some changes this year in terms of your evaluation, fifty percent and twenty thousand, that was the criteria. The way that I'm hearing y'all talk about this is you're starting to raise questions about what, you know, what drives it, those kind of things. So from a timing standpoint, knowing that, you know, we're going to be inviting someone in the future, so I'm thinking about next year, we drop the folder that has all the applications in it. Y'all get the list based on your application, in this case, it was the three grades. Y'all, the responsibility then is on y'all, so then when you walk in here, you will have seen what Woven did, you will see what Assistant League has done. We just use the criteria, all we're doing is repeating back to you what you tell us the criteria. That way, it answers the question. Let's say that you had had the packet before, you could have seen that as a driver and you had already determined, yeah, I still wanted to come, or you know what, now that I saw it, I don't need them.
Right, right.
So let's change, let's change the sequence up just a bit so that we drop the information in, that's something new that we haven't done before. And.
Mike, we can't, we can't do new things.
Yeah.
Well, and I, and I think, I think for clarification on my end, it wasn't even so much the fifty percent, because you're absolutely right about ALC. I think it was they were doubling it, right? So now we're a hundred percent increase and it's actually, that seems significant.
I had the same, even on ballet and CCA, they have material increases also.
Right.
Maybe not that much, but I was trying to, we were trying to go down to materiality. That's what we really focused on is where do we need to spend our time?
You're speaking very legalese, yes, I hear you.
You know, the other one.
I was just going to say, well, Woven, they're also getting ARPA funds as well, right? And so honestly, I'm more concerned, like, my question more is like, you're getting ARPA funds and you're, you've got an ask here and that ask is increasing, so that's actually the other wrinkle that I am.
Yeah. And I think, yeah, and I think adding to that too, is, is this a one-time or is this multiple years or is this an increase we're seeing? What's the trend behind that?
So just a curiosity, I asked Tracy Uvans at Metrocrest to give us a fair value of the services that they provide to the citizens of Capel. His number was four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And so it's like, I was taken back that it was that high.
Wow.
Anyway.
I would add, and I know, I know you don't do this, but be very, very clear that it is like a ten-minute presentation, because that was the other thing.
Yes, yes.
Is limit how much time we're spending in that session.
And tell them, Mayor, we'll break in and cut them off.
Okay, we'll look at it.
So you want a total ten minutes with presentation and questions?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll give them five for presentation and five for questions.
And if we have one.
And we give them criteria, don't we, on like the key things we're interested in?
Well, it's the application.
Yeah.
So, you know, keep in mind, we're familiar with, the exception of Love Thy Neighbor, we're familiar with every one of these organizations. So they don't need to go into a, you know, from the day one to now.
Hey, Mayor?
Ramesh?
I, I appreciate what Don said about giving them ten minutes time. That said, someone that's asking for a hundred and thirty thousand, I would want to spend a little more time on that than someone that's asking for ten thousand. Is, is there flexibility there? Can we have the time based on that ask?
We'll have information still from them.
Yeah.
We'll still have the packet.
Oh.
Right, I mean.
Sorry, can I speak to that?
I think it's going to be more questions from us than their presentation.
And Ramesh, what we have found in the past, and so again, I think that's, first of all, a great question and a great ask, is that when, when we give them a lot of flexibility, they could, they could go on for a very, very long time. We really need to understand the nuts and bolts. How does this apply to Capel? How are you serving their citizens? What, like, why is this ask, how are you going to use that money? Right? And then, and then we're looking to our, our team to make sure that they're legitimate, all the other pieces to it. But we have found that this could, this can actually go on for a very, very, sometimes hours. And so that's why we, if we give them a time limit, it helps with them being more intentional and purposeful in what they're delivering to us.
Right, yeah.
So question, the Arts Center Foundation, is that, is that eligible for hot funding?
They are eligible, yes.
Okay. No, it's not, that's why I was asking.
I'll tell you what I would love to know about the Arts Council Foundation when they come, and I'm sure they'll address this, but maybe if you can just bring it up, is helping me understand the difference between the Capel Arts Council and the Capel Arts Center Foundation. That's specifically for the Arts Center, right?
Well.
Well, okay, maybe it's not. And you don't have to go in, but I just, that's where I would love to understand that.
The council.
And we're all endeavoring to understand.
Okay, perfect. So that's what I'm looking for. I specifically would like to understand because I just, I want to make sure that, that we're, there's not some sort of double dipping.
No, no, they're two very separate organizations.
Okay, and that's what I want to understand.
And, and they have.
Different purposes.
Very different, definite different purposes.
Okay, perfect.
The, the way that I look at the foundation is they're more promoting the arts and doing more of a public relations for the arts, whereas. whereas the Arts Council, they're the ones that put up the art and the park and that kind of stuff, so they're.
Okay, okay, that's what I was thinking, they're the ones that do that, yeah, yeah.
Don?
Can I recommend, I mean, just, there's, there's four that are good in presentations, does it make sense for us to give, for each week, one of those four, give staff like specific direction? What do we want to hear from the museum? Rather than just saying, we wanna hear the same from all of them, because like, the museum, I think goes to, to Kevin's point, that they said this is a two-year thing, like, what's, so what's the update on the plan? We don't need to hear all the beginning stuff, whereas Love Thy Neighbor, Love Thy Neighbor is couch cushion money, right? But we don't know the entity, right? So you need, you need to know who, who they are. So that's a different request, that's a different request. So does it make sense just to give staff direction on what questions do we want answered on these four? Is that?
I, I'm good with that.
I'm good with that, too.
I, I'm good with it, I'm trying to think how we're gonna execute that.
I think you nailed like half of it.
Well, if we're gonna limit them to five days per presentation, if we can, if we can hone in on, get them to hone in on, we wanna know X and Y for.
Okay, so from an execution standpoint, don't want all of you emailing every staff person, so do you wanna focus that to Mike, to me?
That's what I was worried, wouldn't we all?
Can we, can we do it like right now?
That was gonna.
No.
I mean.
I need it in writing, email.
Why don't we just all email you by a certain date, and then you can?
And I will remind you to do that. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I will, hopefully I'll have the folder where I can review the application, because at this point, I don't know a lot of them, so I'd like to read upon them to come with my questions.
And we will provide that, um, I don't have the exact date, but right now, we're still in the process of collecting some documents, but we'll have that as an announcement.
And we'll tell you, the old apps from years past are, are out there available, so you can, you can at least go see what the, what the app will look like.
And, and I will volunteer to also, um, I'm happy to sit with you and go over and, or chat with you about anything.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, both of you.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
No, but one would you like us to email you?
I was gonna, so what is our schedule for the, that, good question, what is the rest of the schedule for this?
The next phase of this would be, we'll have this presentation on July Budget Workshop. I don't have the exact date.
July 15th.
July 15th.
Hey, I think you guys need to check that date, because it seemed like there was a conflict at night. I meant to ask somebody about that. Mark's not here.
I'm not here.
Yeah, there's a CRDC meeting that night.
The CRDC meeting is July 8th.
Oh.
'Cause we, we are attending that.
Okay.
Yeah, CRDC, we're doing a presentation.
Okay, I, I think they talked about the day of CRDC.
Sorry, but thank you.
Mark and I are both out that day, if that matters.
The 15th?
Yeah, if you have the rest of everybody, yeah, Mark and I are both out.
Mark Hill?
Mark Hill.
Mark's on vacation.
He's on, he's on vacation, and I'm helping out a retreat for children with cancer.
Okay. Probably oughta move it off that date then.
That becomes.
You can just give me your proxy.
That's gonna start being problematic, I mean, now we gotta hurt all your ca, uh, uh, everybody.
Yeah.
That was a slip.
I mean, well, y'all listen, do y'all deliberate that night too? I guess you do agree.
They deliberate, it's, it's not, it's not, I mean, there's no vote, but it's a, it's a discussion.
But y'all go down the list and say, yeah, your name.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And how much?
And, and that evening is the Service Wars, Special Equity Funds, and Water Sewer.
Oh, God.
And we've reduced the number of meetings to three this year.
Because y'all wanted to have less meetings.
Three meets, three Mondays, so it doesn't leave.
Yeah, 'cause we were, we met for 30 minutes one meeting.
Do you meet switch CRDC and that meeting?
I don't think we could easily do that.
So we wouldn't be able to do Water Sewer that night, because we don't get, we won't get information from the Dallas Utilities and Trinity River until, like, after the 12th.
Sorry.
We will have to do you guys offline.
Okay. I'll, I'll check to see if I can join remotely.
Mark's.
Let me. Let me have your, your comments back by June 7th.
Okay.
Anything we wanna ask for, right, of these four?
Yeah, I get to edit it.
Okay.
And the good thing is that's retreat evening, so we can always.
I'm just trying to reduce the amount of time we spend on.
Yeah, no, you can ask anything you want, I mean. And we will send out a, or Ashley will send out a, or Phoebe will send out a reminder on that date. All right, anybody have anything else?
I'm just taking the stretch, I'm not trying to rush you in any shape or form.
I have one question, because we, we tell them the Service Wars when, that they're gonna present, and at that time, we tell them, we'll give them information. So we'll hold off on doing that until you give us the questions. Do you have a timeframe after the 7th of when you'll be done, so we can put it on the calendar? If they call us 11, you know?
I'll have them to y'all on the 8th. No, give me a week.
Retreat, okay.
So, of course.
It's not, I don't think it's gonna, all it's gonna be is a matter of sorting the questions by service organization and put them back in an email to you, so I don't think it's gonna be that much.
Thank you.
'Cause I, I'm guessing that a bunch of the questions are gonna be pretty similar.
Well, I mean, like, Capella Special Olympics, I mean, that's pretty solid, I don't, I don't really have any questions, and.
I thought this was just for the fourth, it was a new one.
It will be this, yes.
Yeah.
It's a new one.
Well, and I, I, that, that's a great point, 'cause I thought about that too, like, we know, but I was just curious as to, like, the last time they came was 2017, they haven't been back since, like, do we, do we foresee them coming? Like, will this be something we can expect going forward, right, and how can we be assistance?
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, that's fine, I just.
Yeah, but you're right, I mean, it, it's solid.
I wouldn't think we'll have too many questions, but.
No.
All right.
And wanted to verify just the organizations I have in addition to the three, I have the Capella Historical Museum, and I have Woven.
That's correct.
Yes. Thank you for that.
All right, so the time is 9:28.
Can we keep this?
Yes, that is, yeah, you may. The time is 9:28 PM, and we are adjourned from work session.